I've got the policy right here. Extracurricular activities, including interscholastic competition, non-public students, regardless of whether they attend a district school part-time, will not be allowed to participate in extracurricular activities. That's our current policy. All right. Thank you, Mary. So we'll move on to the treasurer's report.
Okay. I just wanted to make a few comments from the treasurer's report. We did receive about $438,000 from the state for our second payment. This is yesterday and some of today. And so now we're only two payments behind, as it has been for the several years. And that looks to be around $800,000. And as of today, looking at the expenses for the final 2017 school year and the revenues, it looks like we're going to be about a $875,000 surplus for the year. We'll know more next month.
A little better shape, we'll have better balance numbers and final numbers for you. And talk about a business meeting in July, too, to talk about budget, upcoming budget, how we finish. Okay, we'll move on to superintendent's report.
Yeah, I've got a few items here for you. Updated goals were in your packet, which I'm trying to do every month for you. We are now getting information from IASB regarding the board conference. We'd like to reserve rooms. So if you're interested in going to the conference, if you could please let Kelly know the nights you're interested in, and if there's a hotel preference you have, she'll do the best she can to reserve your first preferences. So start thinking about that. There's been a lot of news regarding our state and adopting a budget, or lack of, to this point. One has not been adopted. Like last year, if one is not adopted by law, we are expected to start school and run without any state payments until our fund balance is exhausted. Most believe that the new equitable funding formula or model that the state has put in is agreed to by both sides, both the House and the Senate. The hangups downstate tend to be regarding property tax freezes and as well as money that's tied along to go to Chicago schools. So those two tend to be the two big hangups in the downstate. Based on the reports we have seen with the equitable funding model, our district would stand, as I put in your notes, to be roughly, in our estimation, about the same. We wouldn't stand to gain or stand to lose. But it does provide new formulas for how the money is figured. So just kind of an update of where the funding process is. And Julia just said, we got a payment yesterday, so that was kind of nice. If you go around town to some of the businesses, you might see little North Boone stickers in the windows. Jerry's worked cooperatively with some of our community businesses to put stickers in the window and then put on a website where our businesses are that families can access Wi-Fi if they choose to. So if you see those stickers, that's what those are there for. On June 14th, I was asked to present at the Boone County Board meeting, give a summary of what's going on in North Boone. It was a nice chance to pass along all the good things that are happening up here, and it was very nice to have the Boone County Board invite me down to do that. And as I stated earlier, we do have the need for a business meeting in July and also a policy meeting, because we have a new set of policy in, proposing for Tom, Tom, Mary, and Ed, the 19th. Do you guys want to look at your calendar? Do you want to let me know about maybe doing both of them back-to-back?
I can't do the 19th.
You can't do the 19th? Okay. Should I try to go a week earlier, a week later?
You have to do it before the 10th, or then I probably couldn't do it till after the 23rd or 24th. I'm looking right now.
When's our next meeting? Is it the 23rd?
Twenty-seven.
For July? Twenty-fifth? Have you got your calendar up there?
Oh, wait, I'm looking at June, sorry.
Okay.
Twenty-fifth.
Any other suggestions? It's a big window there. Tom, are you budget or policy?
Policy.
Policy. Have to do it before the 10th, huh? There's nothing to say we'd have to do. We could wait a little longer on policy if that doesn't work. Let's go to business first. Tom, Kinzer, and Ed, does 19th work okay for business?
I think so, yeah.
I'm looking here in a second. Looking at my...
The 20th would be a better day.
20th?
Yeah. Nineteenth is better for me. Twentieth isn't.
At an impasse.
Or if we did it, I don't know.
Nineteenth complete? Complete out for you, Ed? Is there a better time?
We'll be out on vacation, coming back.
I got you. 20th would be better. Why don't you get your calendar up there? I missed the 21st, it's a Friday. Tom, same thing for you, a vacation there, Tom?
Yeah. I won't be back till Monday, the 24th. I could squeeze in the 11th. That'd be it.
What about the 11th for business? Okay there, Tom? Kinzer?
Mike, that won't work for me.
And that one won't work for you? You're out.
No, I won't get it done in time.
Got you. I tell you what, let's, um, let me work with you guys. We'll figure out dates.
I could do the 11th for policy. I don't have anything.
Business come back later?
Yeah, I'll work with you guys on it. I'll start making calls, emails.
The 11th would work for me for policy. Thursdays and Fridays are the dates.
20th and beyond for business, right?
Twenty-fourth.
Oh, maybe. Okay. Thank you, guys. Appreciate that.
All right.
Mary, I'll make sure that you get a note of whenever our policy meeting is, okay?
Moving on to committees' reports. Policy committee, Mary?
We have not had a meeting, but we just planned one, I guess, for July 11th.
All right.
Tentatively.
Business, Ed?
We haven't met.
Okay. Facilities?
We haven't met. We'll meet closer to, prior to school start, early August, I would say.
All right. NCAI?
We have not met since our last meeting, and there are no immediate plans to do so.
All right. Thank you. We will move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Adamson?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Loehn?
Yes.
But you know where that is, Mike? It was the footnote that was discussed at the Policy Committee meeting on March thirteenth.
I know that Mr. Ward, when a lot of the conversation was going on with what to do with it, went back and discussed it with IASB's attorney that had written the policy. And trying to decide through the footnotes and everything how the policy morphed to where it was. Really, a lot of it had to do with keep these kids taking outside courses and allowing the district's freedoms to be accepted. But his other comment was too is that you would want to seek your own board attorney's opinion as well. So that's kind of what I remembered as.
And we did seek our attorney's advice on this. And his thought was that without some strict guidelines that we could run into some issues with what classes, you know, people are, what classes students or parents who want their students to take, and them being, meeting the rigor or even meeting NCA standards.
Did he say that someplace else? I don't remember him talking about that when he was here.
I remember Scott talking to me too about the big things were eligibility, valedictorian, GPA and stuff like that. He said that that was where he could see some of those possibilities. You're running into problems.
That was in the minutes of the Policy Committee meeting on March thirteenth. There's also some discussion of it in the regular board meeting on March twenty-first.
I guess I've had the privilege of being in meetings with Scott about those kinds of things. And I know that he'll defer to whatever the superintendent wants. So for him to come out and give us an opinion that would be different from that would be highly unusual when you're there, Mike.
Scott Nemnich?
Yeah.
I'm stating what Scott spoke. But wait a minute, are you asking me that he wants me, him, to give you the opinion that I want? Is that what you're inferring?
He wants to know where you want to be on something like that before he offers a legal opinion.
And I didn't approach him in that manner. I approached him from him on his stance of what he would defend. I didn't approach him of what I want.
I welcome the opportunity to open up process. I've got some really strong feelings about some of the policies that are in here. From my turn, you're here, that I think have really hurt kids' families. You guys want to go down that road on finding a little bit of kids.
Any further discussion?
It, um, I don't know where this conversation is going, but I'm going to agree with Tom that this process isn't right. It's disingenuous for us to have sent this to all the committees that we did, only to have a lawyer come in at the very last minute and change that decision. That's really disheartening. Not because I wanted a certain outcome, but that was a lot of meetings. There was a lot of meetings on Jake. And I really wish, as Tom points out, if that's going to be our method of operation, then perhaps we always, we do not send anything down to subcommittees. We just bring a lawyer in. Because there were a lot of committee meetings that were had. There was a lot of discussion about this. And I feel rather deflated to have, I kind of wish, quite frankly, Tom, that after all those meetings and I wish I could have presented the policy and said, this is essentially what the subcommittees wanted, but I don't think that was the will of the Policy Committee. And it is just my opinion to state this, but I don't think that the admin really wants this to not be limited under. And so I feel like this has become a bit of a contest. And I don't want to say that it's gone on long enough. I just want it to be over with. If we want to send it back down to committee, I'll do the work, legwork, but I want some sort of assurance. Or if we're just going to go with what the lawyer says, let's just go with what the lawyer said. But I feel that, I kind of feel, quite frankly, that that's a bit of a strong-arm tactic also. When Scott presented, he was clearly confusing six colon three ten with six colon three oh, I think. He was talking about GPA determination also. Scott hadn't been to any of those meetings either.
I also think when I heard about the Policy Committee that there was consensus for the amendment. That's what.
Policy committee.
Policy meeting.
No.
No, the one in March where there.
It was a joint, it was asked for by the board where it would be a joint policy meeting and curriculum committee meeting. So we held curriculum committee and a policy meeting back to back together to be able to discuss.
Well, we held them back to back, but it really wasn't a policy and curriculum committee meeting. It was a curriculum committee meeting in which everybody left except Mary and myself. And then Don chaired the Policy Committee and.
Most of the committee members did not stand. It was invited as well.
Yeah, it was invited.
I also know the teachers' union is very concerned about this one. I won't speak for them, but they have approached me and they are concerned about certain things.
Happy to hear them on the record. They don't need to just approach you. Let's have them be part of the process. They're here. Let's hear what their concerns are.
They were part of the, they were at the occasional meeting when this was sent down to subcommittee.
Are you of opinion, Joe, consensus from the board? Trying to reach a consensus from the board.
I thought about five meetings ago we had when I kept asking for some informal vote. Does, in general, do people want to see this limited or not? I thought we were all in agreement. We really don't want to see it limited. But beyond that, we hadn't talked any specifics. But I thought we were in agreement that we didn't want to see it limited. And then since then, I think some opinions have changed. It is, quite frankly, quite convincing to have a lawyer tell us we shouldn't do this. I feel the reasoning why not to is much more vocal, and I don't want to really push the reasoning we should. I'm not sure that's my place, but I think the reasoning why we shouldn't and the worst-case scenarios are often repeated. And they're quite convincing. I won't disagree with them or say that they're incorrect, but I think that it's, they're quite compelling.
Was the lawyer that said, "We shouldn't do this," was he smarter than the lawyer that said, "We should"?
That I can't say. I would have thought that press is a group of lawyers that all confer.
A group verse one, yeah, I would agree.
But I don't know that for a fact. And I feel like this is becoming this very, what I thought would have been a simple discussion and a simple policy to agree upon has become somewhat divisive, and I don't know how we navigate it from here. But looking back, I kind of regret how it played out also that, and I again seriously would suggest that if that couldn't happen, that we not send anything to the subcommittee, but instead we just bring in, we get a few pros and cons and bring in a lawyer and have them present their case and.
So we have a motion in second. We need to vote. Roll call.
Mr. Kenzer?
Epstein.
Johnson?
No.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
No.
Mr. Hazelworth?
Yes.
Mr. Reddely?
Yes.
Kerry's will be on the agenda for next month. All right, we'll move on to the June seventeen bills. Mary, did you?
I did look over the bills. I thought it was maybe my mistake. Um, and there, I was going to motion to the bill that was presented.
Second.
Motion second. Roll call.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
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 So we move on to science resource adoption.
Yeah, as you know, we've had a science committee put together this year. Molly's been in a very involved process where they put the committee together, they aligned standards. They reviewed fifteen different publishers. They used a rubric to evaluate all those materials and publishers. They got down to two for an adoption of new science resources, which we badly need. Molly negotiated the prices to include, and in your packet there included everything that was with it through the committee and through negotiations to get those prices as low as possible, which includes trainings, workbooks, texts online, and leveled readers for everything. I would like to recommend that we purchase the Inspire Science Kit for K through five and the iScience for six through eight. Resource adoptions for a total of eighty-eight thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars and twenty-seven cents. Liz, you sat in on some of the stuff. Was there anything you? Yeah, it was a very intensive process. I thank Molly. I thank the committee for all their hard work on it. I know we're overdoing science resources, so my hope is that the board will approve that tonight so we can get some resources in our teachers' hands before we start coming as well.
My only question is, how does this address, is this going to be carried out through the high school? Is the process going to be happy with the high school?
They've had an adoption a little more, far more recent. So they're in a rotation already at science, so that they've had theirs.
We did address that though within the committee. That was part of our, when we looked at standards and we kind of prioritized standards with the end game in mind. So the resources that we looked at, the trajectory, and we used the new Next Gen Science Standards.
Okay, let's roll science programs. All right, we have a motion. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelworth?
Yes.
Mr. Reddely?
Of course.
Mr. Kenzer?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, move on to high school update.
Uh, yeah, last, gosh, was it last summer? We proposed freshman seminar, Jake, is that right? And in that approval, you guys said, hey, it would be nice to hear back some data or some thoughts or some reflections of how that went. And so Jake is here tonight to kind of give you guys a little summary and a thought back on how freshman seminar went and some of the accomplishments happened at the high school. So Jake, I'll turn it over to you.
When we went through to determine how successful the class was, we looked at student failure rates. We looked at, you know, discipline and a number of other things. I don't know if you saw, first of all, our, I know our truancy rate dropped quite a bit this year. And I can't remember, I think I've got that here towards the, towards the end of that report. But looking at freshman seminar itself, what we tried to do is we tried to compare every class over the past four years to how they performed their freshman year. And one of the things that I'd like to point out in this whole process is both freshmen and sophomore had comparable, you know, had comparable grade rates there when you look at how they performed there the first year in high school. When you look at the cohort of students, there's any number of things that you, that you could, you know, take into account. You look at the students as a cohort, the sophomore class, for years, you know, people talked about how as a cohort they've been performing academically. They did rather well their freshman year. I also want to point out their freshman year is when we started off Link Crew, which is, I think, is an important aspect to take into consideration. When I try to compare this year's freshman class, I think they're fairly well aligned with both our juniors, our current junior and senior classes. You can see that they outperformed them as far as the grades go, you know, over time. I can't sit here and tell you that it was this statistical difference or anything else like that. You know, but you can, you can see that they, obviously, they did perform a little bit better. I also tried to give some statistics as far as how students did when they were in freshman seminar class versus how when they weren't in freshman seminar class. There were some minor differences between the two, nothing major. I think the big thing for us to do at this point in time is to determine the success of those students as they go through the high school. Is this something that's going to carry on with them then from their freshman year, you know, into the future to see if it has a lasting positive effect or not? You know, I do see some good indicators in there just based on performance, you know, for how they did. You know, and obviously, I won't know how it has an effect on standardized testing as far as college readiness until they get to that point in time. But I know this next year at the high school, we're going to try and provide some standardized testing for freshmen through sophomore year as far as the SAT series goes. So I think freshman seminar, all in all, you know, I saw some good indicators. It's just something that we're going to have to keep an eye on. There's some tweets that we've already talked about for this year. I know Ms. Panta and Ms. Kohut did some surveys with students to see what they felt, you know, they could have benefited from a little bit more. You know, so those are things that are working on, you know, to try to determine how we can always make that class better. If you go down through some of those other statistics, oh, here we go. I guess it's about halfway down the page when you get to the bullet points. We really targeted trying to make communication quite better as far as attendance goes and improving that process, trying to get parents involved for students and creating attendance contracts for students who, you know, started to approach that, you know, the threshold of being on truancy. You can see that North Room has reduced the number of students identified as primary truant from one hundred students in 2015, 2016 school year to thirty-eight students in 2016, 2017. So, you know, through, I think, the biggest process of communication and trying to get parents in and sitting down and having a contract that they're agreeing to, I think, really helped out that process. You know, we have, we did, yeah, I gave a short summary there as far as graduation. I will say this is unfortunately the first year where we had a couple of students who did need parents doing community service hours, which was, you know, unfortunate to see, but there's still an opportunity. You know, as soon as they get their community service hours, we can give that out to families. You know, if they get it throughout the summer, please bring in and we can prove and we can verify that. And, you know, at that point in time, they'll end up earning their graduation date. And we've already had some discussions, changing some things around with our Bike and Pride program. We went from, you know, probably rewarding everybody, you know, a majority of the students to the Bike and Pride program, to rewarding, you know, having very few students probably on that top tier for Bike and Pride. And we're trying to find some kind of happy meeting medium, meeting with the staff members, trying to discuss, you know, how we can better address those issues and maybe some other incentives that we can get to, you know, for students that will be a little bit more immediate. Because that was one of the other problems that we see, you know, we saw with the Bike and Pride program is it was going off semester to add. Well, you know, that happened a couple of months ago. You know, that they're, that they're now being, you know, placed in the category on as far as earning rewards. So trying to put some other stuff to get, you know, to make that incentive a little more immediate there. And give a little bit kind of better, you know, a better positive reward for students more immediately on behavioral learning in that sense. Our out-of-school suspensions dropped. That's, I think, largely due to, you know, the new Cent Bill one hundred as far as out-of-school goes. But it's not like we had a great deal more incidences of students fighting, which is a good thing to see. Our did though, the subsequent end of that is we did have some more in-school suspensions, but students weren't out of school where they weren't, you know, able to receive, you know, direct instruction in, which is something celebrated. We are working on trying to come up with a system to better track. I've mentioned a couple of times now, you know, the number one factor as far as student performance goes is feedback. That also goes for teachers and receiving that feedback to give them direction as far as how am I able to best address, you know, my students' deficiencies and whatnot. So, you know, we're looking at some things to try to track that a little bit better at the high school there. And, you know, we're still trying to determine maybe the best way. If our school doesn't give us the best reports as far as tracking data like time of the day, specific type of appearance, you have to go into each student individually to be able to determine, you know, exactly what it was as you go back and you look at data. So we're trying to just look at some different systems there, you know, things that might help us out. We are getting our SAT scores back. We just got some of those back. The state's going to send out an overall report to us in July. And we'll also get our BP scores back in July as well. So that's something I will end up reporting out in the future.
Any questions?
Jake, what are the numbers at the top of the page? Are those the scores that they got in freshman seminar?
No, no, those are, those are the As and Bs, the total percentage of As and Bs they received throughout all of their classes. And then total percentage of Cs, total percentage of Ss. And that's the same when you look at the statistics below there. That's in every class they took as freshmen.
We just talked about the evidence that we would use to base decisions. And I feel a little remiss, and this is no castigation to you at all, Jake, and you probably will agree with me, that like statistical analysis are tricky waters to navigate. Just because numbers go up and they go up a couple of points doesn't mean that any one thing is the reason for that. We don't know if it's statistically relevant based on what we're seeing up here. No judgment at all of this data, but I guess this might be the second tonight opportunity for us to think about how we want data. Do we have baseline data to which to compare? And have we extracted enough variables to know which variable we're saying, this is the one that caused something to happen or this had an influence? And so.
That's why I tried to point out, you know, Link Crew also started up two years ago. You know, there's a possibility that that could hold some kind of a factor in this. It doesn't necessarily mean that it's specifically freshman seminar. And I did, as you'll read through here, try to point that out, you know. And so it's something that we are going to kind of monitor. And I keep saying statistical difference, uh, you know, I told you I couldn't tell you if it was a statistical significant difference.
And not an important enough decision for us to really worry about it this time, but.
Yeah, and I'm going to keep trying to present you guys with the data and information on things. And if there's something more that you would, you know, like to see, I'd be more than happy to try to, you know, try to get some of that information. Try to make a comparison of the last four classes freshman year. That's the best I had on my loser at this point.
Thanks for putting that together, Jake.
All right, so we will move on to the board agreements.
Yeah, Matt, this was something you asked me to bring forward. I enclosed the agreements in your packet. We have two new board members. And Matt, this was something you wondered if maybe our board wanted to.
We want to schedule another time to go over these agreements. I know I talked to people about this, and I believe if we want to do this, we do need to have an IASB rep there to make it so we can meet for the purpose of board training.
I think it's been two years and we have new board members. I think it would be a good thing to go back over these and maybe modify some of them or just go back over them and do a session or.
We're just kind of looking for, everybody's open to sitting down and doing that again?
Yeah. Should I look closer to the fall with how busy summer is?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would that be a easier direction for you guys?
September-ish.
September-ish.
Or August, I guess, after. Second week.
Start of school, maybe?
Yeah.
Get things up and rolling and then when we got some time.
Well, we did it last time, September, so.
If we have a board come out again, we'll try to set up something that there's a word. All right. Principal slash curriculum advisor?
Yeah, I'd like to recommend the hiring of Cheryl Gieske as a part-time administrator and a curriculum facilitator. Ms. Gieske is a retired assistant superintendent for the Belvedere School District. She was also interim superintendent while they were doing their CIRC. I got to work firsthand with her down there. She was in charge of curricular and staff development as well as mentoring and development of instructional coaches down there. She worked firsthand with Molly too. She worked with her. My proposal would have Ms. Gieske work under the direction of Mrs. Lilia. Mrs. Lilia still is in charge of everything with the curriculum facilitation and support with the facilitation of the curriculum committee meetings and even building supervision too. So we provide Molly and Mrs. Gieske some flexibility. Mrs. Lilia and Mrs. Gieske have worked together collaboratively in the past with the curriculum and staff development down in Belvedere. And this structure would allow us, allow our district to continue with the development of our curricular needs while also providing the needed support in Manchester. Approving this recommendation will allow the district to move forward with the curriculum development we have moving right now. For next year, we would love to continue to work with some group meetings and collaborations for the science and some of the specific areas that we're still looking at to deal with sciences. Pacing guides for the teachers, curriculum maps for our district. So there would still be some science meetings. We would also look to begin a math committee similar to what science is right now and walk through the similar process for math and make sure that our curriculum is aligned within math. This will help us continue on a path of aligning the curriculum, then getting data back, data analyzation, and then working towards instructional implementation adjustments for each year. So we've got to make sure that our curriculum line is lined up first. My recommendation would be to hire Cheryl Gieske part-time. I put a rough number of days, fifty, on there. It's high. It's probably high. We would use her as needed and as Molly sees fit, but not to exceed the total cost of twenty thousand dollars.
We have a motion.
I could move that we, or motion that we move on the position of the principal curriculum advisor as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah. Mike, I'm curious if this will move us, if this might move our timeline. Is there any feel that it might move our timeline and make it proceed a little bit more quickly? Is there any?
I'm hoping so. I'm hoping it'll, our hard time was finding times to meet. And then for Molly also, for when she gets, my hope is this will provide sort of more flexibility and meeting times and stuff like that. One of the things I did ask her too, because Molly starts talking about a lot of things that need to be aligned and worked on and everything, and I said I wanted to make sure, and we've had some discussions with Lynella Munson, Laswell, who was also our own strategic planning manager. We really talked about picking things that we felt we could take on and do very well rather than take on a bunch of things and not do them thoroughly. So we really concentrated on what can we get done and get done well this year. That's what the emphasis was.
We've had a lot of conversations about is there a way for us to know that our money was well spent and that the right decision was made? And not that I'm looking for anything in particular. I'm just wondering if there's any way for us to look back maybe in a year and go, yes, that was, look at how much more. So that's why I was wondering if maybe it would bump up our timeline and we can go, look how much more we did and look how.
You know, I'm hoping that through maybe your science tests and stuff like that, you'll start to see that we're aligned now in the next generation of science standards. Those are one-shot snapshots, but I guess you're probably going to need teacher feedback for what they're seeing to principal feedback. I think there's a lot of those we have to consider. The problem with parties, language, arts, and math, and we're hitting math this year, so. And we don't test science and maps, so that would be another one where we would directly see it. But we know the next generation of science standards has been sorely needed to bring you guys to look at. I'll do what I can to provide that data for you and even teacher feedback.
There's no further discussion?
There's no further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Rollman?
Yes.
And Mr. Allison?
Yes.
And Hazelworth?
Yes.
And Mr. Rabeli?
Yes.
Mr. Blinder?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, and we'll ask under new business approval of student handbook 2017-18.
Yeah, handbook was something we asked the board to approve every year to implement for the upcoming school year. Handbook really stayed pretty close to what we had this year. The only difference is the immunization change that we added to policy where it's, you have to have your immunizations by the first day of school. We had it reviewed last year by an attorney, so we know it's in compliance with everything. We just updated as needed, so my suggestion would be to approve the handbook as presented.
Mike, would we need to change the portion of the handbook, assuming that that policy we approved passes the second reading?
Yes, if it does, then what we would have to do is, any portions in there, we would update it. When do you have to have it to the publisher? Well, I guess we don't publish it, we just post it online. We post it online, so we can update that as quick as we can.
Does it reference that policy?
It's just what the existing policy is.
That's not the curriculum guide?
Curriculum guide just talks specifically about courses that are offered. This is all of our policies and intentions to... How many courses have they changed? But as a fund we do, it's so... But there are changes made, we will update that after it's moved in. It can be done in a day. You can get online.
But it doesn't reference like the policy number, but that policy is embedded within it, yeah.
Makes it a little easier, it's not a publisher. We're just updating it online.
Didn't we have that conversation, though, that this gets embedded in the curriculum guide? The exact wording kind of gets copied and pasted? And it seems weird to me that it would be in the curriculum guide and the student handbook. If it is, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, the curriculum guide, we do take some of the wording and copy and paste it in into there. So, you know, just to follow up with specific policy on like graduation requirements is something, you know, that's obviously everybody's paying attention to and they want to know like what classes do I have to take? Well, here's a layout of all the classes you have to take in accordance with the board policy, you know, and so the other aspects that some of it that are...
Was there conversations about updating this to include the piece about communication between parents and staff? I hear from you guys, hear from teachers, increasingly having issues getting parents to respond to you, to your phone calls, to your emails, to your text messages. Is there thoughts about maybe, maybe addressing that in the handbook somehow, some way?
We haven't discussed it. Typically what we do is the Elementary Association puts out their recommendations from class and everything. In the past, we had, we had membership to that, so we basically take their wording and various things, whether they've been changed or whatever based on our recommendations. You know, that's definitely what we're going to do.
Do you mind if I ask, are you saying like to address like communication in that handbook itself?
Open the lines of communication between the home and school. I mean, I think that one of the things that I, heard Jamie talk about at length, Allison and Heather talked about at length, ability for parents to communicate with you guys about academic and behavioral issues.
To put it in the handbook, though, is what I was saying?
Put something in the handbook so parents understand what their expectations are. I don't know, I just, I wondered whether that had been part of a conversation. It just, doesn't, doesn't mean it should be, I'm just...
Sure. No, the only reason why I ask is because I guess, I think it would be, you know, if there was some way to put the communication, you know, what the expectation on communication is on a report card or send something a different year in home. And here's the only reason why I say that. In a lot of cases, when the parent gets the handbook, they have a piece of paper that it's sent off that says they've read and understood the handbook. I can't tell you how many conversations they've had with, here's a handbook, you know, that's this thick, and not too many people have actually read through that. I think you stand a better chance of sending something home specifically and writing to them on.
I was, I was even thinking that, it's a good point. You might do something from the principal's desk, like a welcome back to school or some of your newsletters and just kind of hit that several times about. Not a bad thing.
Talked about it at length at that roundtable that we had, I mean, it was one of the prevailing issues. I just, I didn't know whether we were making some steps to... I didn't, I didn't mean that if the handbook had to reflect, I just, you know, is there a way that we can begin to, we don't get the parents back on our side, we're not going to turn this thing around.
Sure.
Yeah, and I can speak for probably where we do send out newsletters beginning of the year with a welcome message here, a ways to contact us, or this is your science, all of that. I'm guessing elementary does the same. And it's, it's general in here about how to contact the school in regards to access and things like that, all of those things. And I know like the high school has a student handbook that's different than the district one, but it is policy specific to the high school as well as the elementary schools have student handbooks.
I get all that, but I mean...
Student agendas is specific, not the student handbook. We all have the same student handbook.
Correct, but the student agendas that students get at the high school is specific for the high school regarding their attendance policies and your staff. The elementary has their own agenda that has information.
It's not even about that, it's about, you know, if parents understand that when they don't respond to you, what they're essentially saying is it's okay for our kids to either A, not do the work academically, B, to misbehave in school. I mean, do they understand that that's the message that they're sending their child, whether it's they're telling their child that or not? I guess, I have really strong feelings that we're going to have to get them to begin to communicate with you guys in order for us to...
And I would agree, because strategic, strategic planning, we did the three-tiered approach, you know, the one-to-one communication, the building level communication, the district level communication. I will say as a district, we have been doing a better job, I think, of throwing the bait out there. You know, almost every school's got Facebook now, we're doing the Twitter stuff, we have the newsletters that are going out at the district level, you know, the parent conferences on the inside. I think we are truly reaching out, but I think that last piece is what I'd say, and I agree wholeheartedly, you know, there's not that, you know, they're not reciprocating often enough. You know, we're giving it to them, what more can we do? And I, you're going to have that demographic of parents that it does, I mean, you can go to their house instead of their dinner table, they're not going to respond to you. I mean, just, it's not going to happen. But what can we do as a district? And I will say that we have started climbing that upward challenge, but not where we should be. But no, I, I'm with that on that, I think that's...
I think communications will help drive our truancy rates, you know, dropping by 60 students, we need to get a heck of a lot better job this past year than the year before was communicating and actually the parent, you know, come in, hey, you know, at this point in time, you need to come in for a, for a contract and sit down and talk. I mean, it worked for most of the students, or for most of the parents. You still had a parent or two who still didn't show up and unfortunately, you know, you sent, you document that you even sent cert by letter home that you need to come in and talk about this, and the person never did it, and the student continued to miss. Well, hey, you're over on the policy and unfortunately you're going to do the wrong in the classroom. It stinks, but they, you know, the, I guess my point is the communication, I think the communication worked a lot better on that aspect of the year. And I don't think, for some of them, you're not going to get them in here until it matters. And even for some of those, you know, but, but we're going to try, we're going to keep trying.
You guys have done a great job in the last year of really raising the bar. And I think it's disappointing that the parents haven't responded.
Hopefully persistence and building trust will help bring some of that back to you. You may not be...
Are the 17, 18 agendas printed?
We're talking about the student planners.
Yeah.
They, for, for the high school, we have to send them off at the end of May, yes. In order to get...
Well, that's maybe the, maybe prior to order, like following years, we could think about communication page. It would maybe address the parent and the student and put them together as one and let them know that, you know, they're not communicating, we cannot do our best for their child.
Sure. Well, but that's kind of like, you know, you go along the same lines. Like if they had a sign off that I read the student planner and I know and understand that, it's basically the same thing as, you know, I read the student handbook and I know and understand everything in there, you know, and we can ask them to...
But the planner, the student uses every day, so...
Yeah.
It's kind of, it's kind of like we've gotten to that point in the world where everything's a, I accept the terms and conditions of the software, cell phones, computers. I mean, the handbook is kind of, maybe it's turned into that. And like I said, I don't, I don't know what more you guys could do other than continue to try. We need to find a way to get the parents to reciprocate the effort that you guys today.
And it's not, it's not just us as administrators or as teachers, it's also like our parent organization, our PTO. We've worked this year trying to help them to get more membership. You know, we've tried changing the meeting times, we've tried to give them opportunities to have recruitment, you know, put the table out at open house, telling them, you know, when we're going to have a, a school event so that they can recruit. And their PTO, the parents are even having a difficult time getting parents to come in, you know? So it's, it's not, it's a tricky thing, but all we can do is just keep trying, doing our part. We know signing off on that doesn't guarantee that they've read it, but at least we've put it out there. You know, we're going to keep opening our doors. We, I think everyone has created more of an open door policy to their schools, whereas before it was, you know, you got to sign in, you got to give us your driver's license. Well, now we're having more community events, dinners on the front lawn and, and things like that. So I think we just, you just keep trying and keep opening your doors.
All right, so do we have a motion on the approval of the student handbook 2017-2018?
I can make a motion here if we want. The handbook is presented.
Second. Motion second. Further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
And Mr. Hazelworth?
Yes.
And Mr. Rabeli?
Yes.
And Mr. Blinder? Yes.
Yes.
I'd like for Kelly to get back here quickly.
So John got unripped?
Okay.
Yeah.
Really?
There you go, that other recorder.
All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn from executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Back and open session? Being there are no recommendations from executive, executive session, and there's no further risks coming forward the board, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Have a great night.